Oh yeah, turning Riverhead. It was only like this, it was less than two feet or right at two feet.
Yeah, Jameson was fishing off our back.
It's four and a half, right now. And it's, what Mike was saying is it's uh, it takes about up to ten hours.
Four.
Thank you. Both. And let's. I just couldn't believe it when we were there yesterday.
Yeah.
Too big a shoe or something.
Yeah.
I didn't see it. I was trying to get that through. It is all. They're trying to let us do some town and so they also. It's just kilometers of money.
So it's coming down. We should be sure.
Yeah. Around like in Slum田. You know, we like to.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
So now you're scared.
You need to call. Yeah. Yeah. And I can sit down with you or whatever. I'll do. Yeah. I'll do you. Reach out. Okay. Yeah, we can just be that. Exactly. Yeah.
At least we're kind of.
Yeah.
Between Tony and Bob, nine thirty. All those and so too, please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will be the order if you want to have some. I'm pretty sure it was on the. No. Okay. The meeting isn't being recorded. If you choose not to record, you have the option. First item on the agenda, Stephanie Farm with an update on the building sale. Morning, Stephanie.
Remember the uh, the idea that we got it's not public record yet. Don't reference the name or.
Um, outside of that, I don't, I mean, I don't necessarily have a lot more to update. Yes, Steve and I can just chat it over the phone um, based on the last week's meeting with just having some questions. So I'm here to just answer any questions that you guys might have. I did send a little update. I think Dan and Steve was on there. Um, just based on some of the uh, we had talked about putting on those commercial websites instead of having an attachment, I think I had sent. But there's been almost three hundred views just on that commercial that was like, or that's a bigger commercial property. Those are businesses or site starters that are looking at um, potential sites. I have myself done basically contact with, and I have your guys' listing price listed on that at sixty. So I have not done any uh, direct contacts from that way back yet. But it's interesting to see how many people are actually looking, clicking the information. So the traction is out there. Um, there's also like where I can run to see where the interest might be coming from. So where, how many tasks people are clicking on it and then where they're coming from. So when I ran that report based on that website data, I think it was Mason City clearly involved. Where the people are mostly. So I think they are pretty relevant um, businesses that might be interested. And then I did talk to two uh, local entities that would, one would be an expansion, one would be a new startup that were interested in this. Not interested lately.
Sounds great.
Yeah. Um, I think the only question that I would ask Andy and I had CC'd him on the email as well is just, you know, how that's works. If you guys do get an offer, I think you guys got two, received two offers. How does that work for? That'd be a question for you, you to ask me. How does it work for the county to uh, counter? Can it counter on a, on a process like this? I didn't know the answer to that. Steve and I chatted over the phone. We didn't know how that would work. So that would be a closed session counter based on contingent on public hearing. Um, but it'd be interesting to know how that process works because that's the question I'm getting on this side of things. Not as realtor, just as sort of the liaison.
And I'm sure that probably we'd have a closed session to talk about a number. You probably have Candy write up some sort of official. But it would have to be contingent on the public.
Gotcha. Yeah, Andy didn't respond to that news. Thank you. He's on the agenda later on. Um, I'll jump on after my session is done. I could listen, listen to his answer. There, that way I could, I could answer it on this side.
Yes.
Great, Dave. Excellent. Thank you, Stephen.
Thanks a lot, Mark.
Is there any more questions?
I don't know. You might have some waterfront property available in town.
Yeah, no, that's what we were talking about when meeting started. This is the one percent of the year that we don't necessarily like we have anywhere to live. But I got a camera, so I'm ready to, to head home and start pulling the bottom basin if I need to. So let's see.
Oh, it's this morning and she's up.
Oh yeah, we watched the USGS like there's some meters kind of little blocked in the corner. Lockton's meter went from five, which was normal Saturday night to ten. And then yesterday dropped to six. Think it breaks the bank, the bank blocked in. We happened to, oh, that is, that was this morning.
This, and here's a lot wider spread than yesterday. There's Saturday night. There's a lot of water.
Lot of.
I've never seen anything like.
No, we're over six.
That's five.
So.
There's water coming over to, to right in front of my house and the gravel that you go over top.
But I got up yesterday morning and went to the news and like, serious? And I went out. I only had two tents.
What? We had ancient two tents. Yeah, little turkey gut, nothing.
Kind of crazy.
All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
Great job.
Come back. Thank you.
Okay.
Sean Snyder said that he's moved the sandbag, he had asked Frankville to bring the sandbag to, down to Freeport for anybody that needs, wants sandbags. They'll make, they'll make up five hundred sandbags. He's had requests for sandbags already. So they're having, so it's gonna be there. It's a Freeport shop.
When I got water sitting in my rock yard.
Well, hey, what? It's uh, Bethany Oldgaz's church in Eltuna chose our county to pray for this week. So maybe that will do some help.
Thank you. Yeah. Hey, bit of work?
We'll take it.
Yes.
We may need.
He said a sandbagging machine. Is that, who owns that?
That's, it's the whole county. He mentioned this is the sandbag.
Do we store it over there?
Yeah, it's stored at Frankville, I think, in the.
Oh, that's familiar.
Then uh, we have a.
The old city shop over there.
And we have a pump.
Our county shop.
We have a big, it's a six inch discharge pump. Think that we have over stored at Spillville at the city shop in Spillville. And that, that actually went over Spencer during that big flood event over there.
You might have that all consolidated.
It would be, it's uh, good equipment that we have available.
Yeah, the idea of the sandbagging machine is not the smarter decor.
Uh, I'm.
But I don't get flooded in some like, so.
Well, I can get over to Esteli.
Well, you must take your chair, Mike. Say, I'll remember them too. Call is coming in this morning.
Yeah. Actually, it's pretty quiet. Thirty.
Yeah.
Then it, then the floods, you know, phone calls comes in. Might as well just go ahead and mic. Yeah. Um, sort of right in. Did you have? I was actually counting the kilograms. Uh, there's nothing new this week. We're over flat, our bridge study, there's nothing new this week. Subdivision data is in Canada. There's nothing new this week. Uh, Corey Hill Road um, improvements. There's nothing new this week. Uh, that divided construction is ongoing. The rock in the N F D I campsite and shaping plan is ongoing. Um, we have the three inch, the base dome goes underneath the two quarter inch dome is uh, almost complete.
That's Nesty Valley.
Yep.
It's, you gotta, you're not giving the crews extra credit. You brought it in on Friday to seal it up ahead of this big rainstorm. That was a wise move, Mr. Engineer.
Uh, that, that was directed by, by staff and I, I definitely need to go ahead on that. All, all hands were on deck on that one.
Just so. So the road is cut down now? Great.
The road is and the campsite is, is, the road around the campsite is almost done. Um, with the three, three inch rock and the, we'll still have to do the three quarter inch uh, top, you know, the toppings for the drive center.
How big is that three quarter, uh, three inch?
Three inch, depends on where you're at, but um, five, seven inches. So five inches the, at the, yes, site and then seven, the seven on the, on the road.
And your crew's got a compliment from the neighbor between fifty-two and Nesty thanking them for slowing down when they were out mowing so that the dust was not overwhelming as they were mowing their yard.
I didn't know about that one.
Yeah, I know. So your guys would slow down with the rock trucks as they went by them and out of courtesy, which was a real plus.
The guys that are working out there have been fantastic. So um, it's been a difficult year and probably not gonna get to working Nesty Valley this week. Just. Yeah, you know, the, the rain and everything else. So um.
I have enough our own work to do.
Was that? Be enough work to do without that.
Yeah, yes.
And next week, maybe we can. Yes. I, so um, Bridge sixty-seven is, is open. Uh, we think there's gonna be closure over the weekend. But uh, thanks to uh, crew and technicians, uh, we planted, they're planting it on Friday. Um, so that was kind of a, where we weren't ready to open it. And our guys said, hey, we'll get it done because we were that close. And so all the staff got it done. That was, that was a big deal. Um, a lot of demand to keep that thing open. So it's open this, it's open this weekend. Um, A cover work on A fourteen East of Hesper is to begin this week. We'll see if that's true or not, just with all the rain. Uh, but we are trying to mobilize. We will be mobilized to, to work, work on that probably later in the week. Um, The DOT Bridge Engineers visited on seven fourteen. Uh, I've got one last thing to do on, on that to coordinate with the DOT. Uh, good news on the FEMA side of things. Uh, total obligated expected reimbursements. Uh, category A forty-nine thousand, category C one hundred and six thousand, and category Z is seventy-seven hundred eighty-four dollars. Um, so far only the federal has paid on, on CAT C. Um, you're expecting a check from the federal, from the feds on CAT A and CAT Z at any time. Um, asphalt patch work over B thirty shoulder, over B thirty-two shoulders are to commence this week. And that's, they were supposed to start today, but it's not gonna happen. Um, and then the patching of W twenty is also looking at, we are looking at, getting those patched by River City as well. The Durapatcher is on W forty. Uh, Bridge three oh seven is shaping up to let in twenty twenty-six. Uh, there's nothing new to report this week. Uh, except I guess, well, the right of way, we, we, I have accepted uh, request on the right of way. The price is on the right of way. They're a little bit higher than, than the assessed value, but in talking with um, the assessor, he, he said that is normal uh, and nothing was out of bounds on the request. So um, Bridge two oh eight E. Will begin, begin construction. It's supposed to be today. Again, weather is gonna be holding that up. Uh, Bridge one twenty-six, need clearances have been completed and will likely be uh, let in December. Uh, right of way, uh, work will begin shortly on that. Um, Frankville Road getting closer. Um, just updated cost estimate suggests that two point nine million might also still be high. Uh, sign grant. Um, nothing new this week other than progress has been made. Uh, all the, all the locations have been uh, located for utilities. And I expect the signs will be put up this week. Uh, the little boy, uh, the trailer should be in this week.
CJ had a question on that. Is that, is that gonna have the capacity to handle his excavator out of the landfill?
I imagine so. I don't know what the weight is, but I would imagine so. That's uh, upgrading always. And so I haven't talked to TJ about that, but yes, I was, potentially yes, yes. Tendively, yes. The idea was that we upgraded the trailer to accommodate all the expected loads. So.
We committed to buying that.
Yes. Uh, Turned Nine will host a meeting on August twenty-first to make a go, no-go decision to begin stabilizing. Um, Town Line Road and Whitetail Road like um, August twenty-sixth, I'm gonna say that's unlikely for August twenty-sixth based on the weather this week. Significant damage from rain is reported this weekend. It's being cleaned up by the crew. We have uh, posted, I think it's four road closures now on Facebook, might be five. Um, so we're trying to clear that up and then get back to operations as normal as soon as we can.
Yeah.
Go ahead. There the culvert right below my place on two forty fifth. I don't know if that one, I don't know if it's the DOTs or hunters. But that one, the water's gonna be running over the road on the highway ditch and, I mean, I don't know if that was plugged underneath there. That, oh, that's bad. That's.
Just isn't it blocked now or?
I don't know. It's just about going over the top of it.
Top of Highway nine?
No, well, we'll be going over the gravel just.
Okay.
To the north, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I don't know that one because it always builds up there.
Okay. I don't know. I'll have to look at the terrain there.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't know if that's a yield.
Because it's. If it's, I'll look at the right of way on that and look at where the location is. So if, if it's, but it is having trouble right now, like you can call it in.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's gonna be coming up over the road.
I can notify the DOT uh, like if, if it's DOTs are up, put it in our queue as well.
Yeah, so I don't know.
It's ours.
It just looks to me like it's right. Or I could either, I'm not sure where the right go where.
Be there to do right after, right after this report.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanna bring. I'm trying to see what I've got.
One here.
The patching, uh, are we scheduled, the patch on that culvert, where we replace that culvert on B sixteen west of Spillville between there and Purven?
Uh, we are going to be looking at all of those patches. Um, I need to coordinate the W twenty, that B sixteen, and then I think there's one more that I'm not thinking of off the top of my head. Um, to see if we want River City to do it by the end of the year.
Yeah, it's getting a little rough.
Yes.
Gentlemen, could I interrupt for one second? This is Sean. I want to give you a thirty second update.
Go ahead.
Uh, so we've started sandbagging operations in Spillville and in Freeport. Uh, the Freeport area is gonna be about an hour from now uh, by time we get things set up and over there. Anyone in need of bags can go to those uh, locations and grab them. Uh, getting early reports of lots of homes with water and basements uh, around the Luther College area and also now in Spillville. Uh, obviously, Michael's told you about county roads that are closing. Um, I, I expect this to be, to get worse uh, before it gets better. So I'm gonna be uh, kinda hit or miss the rest of the day. If you need something, call my cell.
Okay. That sandbagging, is that the county shop in Freeport?
That's correct, sir. Uh, gonna be about an hour before we get it down to Freeport, but that's where people can go to grab the bags.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Thanks. You don't got anything else for Mike?
That, that two oh eight E, will I get that done by fall then? I know some. I should get that.
There's a box, so I mean.
Oh, okay. It's, you know, it's a triple box.
You'll go and ask them.
Or it's, once, once that, I'm put in, it should be straightforward after that. Um, so I, I would anticipate once the excavation. Yeah, the, the special excavation issue with the, the tribes. So that'll be a little bit slower than normal, but everything else is straightforward.
That's a long time coming.
Yeah.
So I've got this, I put it on a type of time since this road related is the dedication of the Nesty Valley Road to the public use. Any prepared terms that the conservation board did it, uh, acted on it last week. So now you guys can.
What is that scheduled for?
We're afraid to guess.
It can be dedicated. My opinion, it can be dedicated at time.
I mean, with the, there's two significant.
And, and for what it's worth, the road itself is. It's basically, I mean, there's a, it's beautiful, the public, so.
Who, who seats that?
Well, uh, we see the, the um, the roadside, um, the campground was, was seeded for um, it's gonna be seeded by conservation. Um, the conservation did want to give the roadside, um, and that was kind of a hiccup that I had the, it was in our contract to seed it originally. You not coordinate uh, county conservation to see that as well, even though they're English, you so. So I did a tough part.
I was on, yeah, it is. I was on Friday and I'm glad you see it because it looks like if it hadn't been with this amount of rain, because it was already, we had, you had some seedlings already up. Pretty good. Otherwise, we'd lose a lot of erosion down to those.
I.
For those silt fences.
Yeah, well, we have a lot of buffer. One of the nice things about the way that the erosion control is set up, we have a lot of grass, grass buffer to the most of that silt fence. So yes, it would have been ugly, but we still would have had the buffer plus the silt fence afterwards.
Would anyone like to take action on it?
I've moved to approve the dedication of the Nesty Valley Road.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the dedication of the Nesty Valley Road. It is a resolution. Mike?
Hi.
Hi. It goes just, it goes as far as the culvert side.
Yes, it's, it is, you should have a document in there, uh, outlined, map of it. Uh, I can fit it on a map, you know, and it's a map again.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty.
It's pretty, it's just goes around the culvert side and then uh, straightens up some of Town Line roads. Uh, not perpendicular.
About like Purvisine. It's all.
No, the Purvisine is only east of fifty-two. It means it's two mill caliber. Yeah. And again, I'm probably gonna put the, move it back because all of this rain is gonna keep it so wet. And then I looked at the twenty-one day forecast away on actual weather. It doesn't look like the rains. It doesn't look like dry weather. So.
As I was saying, you need some moisture to activate, don't you?
Yeah, but we, we applied that moisture and, and I was talking to the Purvisine rep, was it last week? And he was saying that on the front end, we can reduce the amount of um, water and Purvisine mixture on the application. If you know that you're gonna have dry weather afterwards.
Oh.
But that's still, he still wanted to be dry for a couple of weeks. Yeah, it's just, we haven't had it. So.
But anisial we ought to be getting.
What, what about the anisial?
Down on the, on B thirty-two.
That, well, we gotta get this patching in first and then, then we'll, the time tracker is ready to go. Uh, asphalt specials or whatever, not asphalt specials. Uh, we're getting the name of the contractor out of Minnesota. Um, they are ready to go as soon as.
The rock is on, so you know, it's important.
It is, correct. It is dog pile, ready to go.
I'm, I'm hearing some folks would like to see it.
I would like to see it. So uh, yeah, we're just, it's just been, it's been, it's been a year.
Do you wait until you ever see it?
We're waiting for the rain. Um, but yes, River City is, is, we want the, right now it's super narrow. We cut off the, where we're gonna.
Down the shoulders.
Through the shoulders. So there's a four inch lip, so everyone needs to be drive careful on that, that stretch. Uh, it's not a situation we like, but it's.
It has to be done sometime.
So.
Big project, I feel.
Yeah, the fog seals.
No, we haven't done that yet. We've seen all the patching.
Hmm.
Round out. It's amazing. So.
I think, I think I heard that the crew that they're bringing is gonna be on that. So.
Well, thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
Uh, consent agenda?
Well, I haven't permitted.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Okay.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
The committee reports, uh, building up the this rain has given us new opportunity to see the leak stuff around the farm today. John has been up there catching, pitching water at, I think, three locations. But this, we're able, because we've had so much rain, we've identified this is coming above where the clock is in the upper roof is going down.
Okay. So does that mean the dome is gonna have to be?
I think we may have that upper roof on the, upper roof above by the dome or something. I'll get up there after the meeting with John and take a look. So he wasn't able to this morning, but he was busy. First thing, but this rain we've had.
They did some major patches on the dome when we had them last, but they warned us that that was only a band name. Yeah, the dome is gonna need to be replaced eventually and that.
Two hundred and a million dollars. Plus.
So we'll continue to look.
Put gold leaf over it and seal it up there.
Yeah, this is, did the courtroom seeing it?
You can go with me after the meeting and take a look. Mark's, Mark has got a vested interest in climbing through the holes up there with me.
Interesting.
Frustrating.
Let alone the shingle issue, which we need to continue to push, but yeah, something to resolution on that because it, it's not gonna get. Push, but yeah, something to resolution on that, because it, it's not gonna get any better. I didn't look this year, but I'll bet everyone.
Yeah, be interesting to go up there and see the difference, I've got some, I've got photos from, I think, one of our first visits up there. Looking, identifying those cracks, and so it'll be. I'm sure there's kind of like you, I think, must be more.
Went to the board and all meeting tomorrow, but, um. Didn't have a forum, so we didn't have a meeting, but we had, we did have a little, a little discussion. It's interesting.
Any progress on their committee that's coming? That's the eight.
Yeah, she heard back from three of the five of the people. Responsible one. And the other one, she was gonna read wasn't yet, so. There is some progress, wanting to get that put together. Then. From here on out, the meetings will be here for board health, if we decide.
Up to them, I guess, I, that, I told them that was your. Recommendation, but.
There is some concern statewide or the reasons. Said it was eight cases in the state. And out of those eight, three of them were vaccinated. So it's just kind of an eye opener there. All right, next item on the agenda, Matt Tap Scott, Toys Go Round.
Morning.
Morning, Matt.
It's here.
And they have copies of your. The entire consent.
Thank you very much. I'm also joining me this morning for Toys Go Round is our. Recent hire and director of the program, Paul, or Paul Scott, so. Um, thank you for the invitation. If I may, real quickly, I know you have, um, printed copies of our, of our comments. But I spent forty plus years in early childhood education, and I did that both around the state and frequently around the nation during. Delivery of, of educational services for people working in the field of early childhood development. And we are blessed in this community to have Toys Go Around, the toy lending library in our community, and. I've been involved several years, both as a board member, but before that, as a client of Toys Go Around, and it truly is. Like a, a diamond in the rough, it is an incredible resource that very few, many communities of any size have. And I know we do not do a, a strong enough, good enough job. Letting folks know that this resource exists in our communities and exists to assist young families raising their children, so. Thank you for time to share those thoughts.
Is there any possibility? Raising the rent?
Everything's possible. What are we looking at? We are, so thirty thousand dollars a year is our annual budget. And we are a very part-time organization, um, we serve, we have nineteen hundred visits annually during the three part-time shifts that were open at the library. Um, we operate, as I said, for average thirty thousand dollars annual, so. What do you?
Definitely a shoestring budget.
It's a very much a shoestring budget, and part of the reason we've hired Paul is. The woman who literally built this program, Kathy Barlow, and over thirty years was involved and built this program from the ground up to make it be, it, it's an incredible. Operation, it's an incredible. Resource for the community. But we weren't getting out and telling the community that story. And so we are, that's why we've hired a new director to do more community outreach, which we've been doing, it's reflected in your notes, um. But we still are very much a shoestring operation. But we also understand that five hundred dollars a month is incredibly more than fair and reasonable for rent, and so. We, that, that's not a decision we can make here today, would have to go to our board, but, um, we would entertain whatever, and then. So we'd see where we're at with that. And one thing I would ask is we entertain this is to ensure them that we have a signed lease, cause when we were. When the county took over the building and then it resigned, and then drew out the maps and stuff, there was some confusion, and Mark and I talked about this when it happened. That the map that was drawn out didn't reflect the space that we were currently using, and one of those spaces was the front door and access to our. And so I said, we can't really sign this lease, because we've just been drawn out of. Access to the building, so, and then, you know, everything just got busy and. So currently, we're operating month-to-month lease, and we'd like to extend that so that we aren't concerned about that every month, so.
That's fair.
You, uh, said you, Paul, as to be your PR.
Yes.
And being an education expert, I think, I think his credentials are probably well-known. But, uh, is that one of the primary, is one of his primary goals, because you're. Red, and you're, you have secrets.
Um, except for the hundred people that use it every, you know, and it, and it, and it's fluid, because. Very good family friend of mine, their kid aged out at about eight years old or so, nine years old, they start to age out of what our inventory is. So we're looking at those young families, zero to eight, zero to ten, um, but outreach to WinMed, outreach to Sunflower Childcare. Outreach to, who else, Paul, that I'm forgetting, but. Doing community building with those organizations, and one of the things we're doing with Winnebago Medical, which I thought was, we all thought was pretty creative, was. To offer to every child from Winnebago, every family from Winnebago County. That is born, Winnebago Medical Center, um, a three-month membership to it, that they can redeem whenever is. We've all, most of us, I think of our parents, and so we know what the first several months of bringing a new person into our family is like. But offer a three-month trial membership, because when people walk through the door and experience Toys Go Around, they're sold. It is an amazing research and, and resource, and as somebody who spent forty years in early childhood education, truly, and. And I transplanted to Winnebago County from Polk County, we used to have the toy lending library in Polk County, and we closed it because. It was offloaded to an org, to an agency, childcare resource and referral, that it was just staffed out to another job on their list of things to do. And so this is an incredible resource, and so getting the word out, and that is Paul's, that's his task, how do we build? And with corporations in the area as well, we have had conversations with several employees at some of the manufacturers in the area. Who there are young families on the line there. And so, how do we build a relationship with that company to say? You know, how do we assist you to, this is a benefit to your families working here to come and utilize this? Because it, one of the things we hear from the families that it matters to a lot is. This is an incredible reduction in our expenses when we're not going out and spending. Two hundred dollars on toys that our kids play with for three weeks. And because the library is structured, getting back to Kathy Barlow, and building a system like that, they come back in, and their. Parents are required, or whoever checks them out, because we have grandparents that are members as well. They're required to come back in clean, but we also have a relationship with Spectrum Network that we hire, one of their, um. Workers, one of the folks in their adult day center to wash toys with us as well, so. Point being is, we're putting toys back on the shelf that are quality, clean, ready to go and be used, and, and strong enough to be used, repeated.
Has Paul been already successful in twisting the arms of these two gentlemen behind this to make sure that there's some kind of a community, uh. Public service announcement, and, uh, you know, a nice expose of what is hidden over there?
Um, especially during the upcoming fund drive.
If he's done that, it's not been strong enough, Steve, that's.
Oh, I, I wasn't putting any pressure on him, but, but I just wanted to, you know, I was.
Now, the pressure's on this side of the table.
We all, all over there, see if it's possible, but.
I know, the other possible goal of that is keeping. Toys out of landfill, you know, people running, guys, and it's going away.
Right.
Majority of them probably end up in landfill, so, this way, cut down on that whole cycle.
My biggest, biggest issue is what we, we're paying nine seventy-eight a square foot up for public health, and. Like you're like two seventy. Like two dollars and something a square foot, and.
Do you have a number in mind, a proposal?
I guess we have a really.
All right, we can do more, um, but.
Right, right now, we ain't covering our monthly expenses, I mean, we at least gotta let alone the one point two million acre building.
We, we can't come up with that.
No, I know.
One point two billion?
No, but I mean, that's. At least gotta be covering our monthly expenses plus.
And I agree with that, Mark, one thing I would, and excuse me for interrupting, but is. I do, I, you know, I came from Polk County, and this is. Anywhere in the state, because I did travel around Iowa a lot as a childcare educator. Anywhere in the state, this is incre, and that our county can say. If you have these kind of needs, this is where you come, and they, not, it's well structured, it's well, you know, and. This library is such, and, and you're right, it's, it's an undiscovered gem in our community. Um, even myself, my wife and I are members, though our kids, our youngest kid is twenty-three years old, we're still members, not just because we're committed to the concept. It's, this is an incredible value for the community, an incredible resource for families with young children or grandparents who have grandchildren visiting. They can buy trial mem, you know, or three month, not, we don't call them trial memberships any longer, three month memberships, so when their kids are visiting during the summer. And here in Winnebago County, we have several, several members who fit into that category of grandparents that utilize the program. We know there's additional outreach we can do to create additional revenue in this organization, um, and we're committed to doing that, so.
Thanks, Matt, we'll, we'll let you know when we. Sit down and go over this.
I, you know. Ten percent, it'd be easy, twenty percent, it'd be doable, we get much higher than that, and that's on our budget, that becomes. And so there are other ways to. Thank you very much.
Well, that, do. Uh, next item on the agenda, ten, ten, Emily Roxton, and Brian Hager, and Spectrum Network, discuss the way to. Yes, please.
All right, Brian's quite a bit more qualified than I am, so we're gonna let him out of the. So, I'm just, I'm gonna sit here and nod.
Okay. I'm, I am a new.
You have something about our insurance today?
Yeah. We burn someone's dollar. Yeah. Um, I am back, back on the board. Um, I'd served a six, six or eight year term. And a few years off, and our, our. President had resigned a couple months ago, and the, the board asked if I'd serve another term, so I am back, I'm not. Um, a hundred percent up to speed on. On some of these things, so I don't, I don't have a, a ton to say, I didn't, I didn't know what the. We're obviously looking at rent rates.
Yeah, I mean, it's. Right now, you're at what, four?
Four, so.
Fifty or sixty seven left in the forest. And granted, we love the buildings up, whatever, but still, we're. We're paying nine seventy-eight down there, and.
That's market, market rate in town.
Oh, yeah.
For square foot, we're back to that square foot, you said we were at what?
There are four, what was that?
It's four, so. It's no calculation. But, the team out.
Yeah, metal four.
Ben, did you do them off the beacon, square foot?
I did them off of the lease map square foot. And I did only the actual leased space, not the common areas.
I'm like, maybe that's way in storage room near the back.
We had to do some calculations when we moved the Department of Human Services, or the Health and Human Services, and, cause they require. Very specific square footage measurements, so we, for theirs, we got their exact amount, and then the common area, the exact amount, and divided it up by a ratio of all tenants, so that. We get them their number, and so at that time, we did everyone's.
Kansas, we're reimbursed by the state for utilities, state fees.
Yeah.
Right, so that's.
Utilities. Every, all the monthly expenses, they, they pay.
Divided by square foot, essentially.
Twenty-nine point three percent.
Okay.
Not, we couldn't take it at thirty.
Yeah.
I didn't like it, but I tried to run it.
So they pay, they pay their share of all utilities, snow, remote, everything, all any monthly expense.
I know when, I mean, part of this discussion come, came up, because when we renegotiated the lease with. The food pantry, we put an annual increase into their lease when we built it, whereas we didn't do that with Spectrum, and I think that's where this is really.
Yeah.
Coming up, is it, you know. Two thousand a month may have been fair at the time, or even this year, but at some point, we need to know, we can't leave it at that forever.
Uh-huh, cause they, they are paying like ten. Yeah, so, square foot, they are.
Who's there?
The food pantry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they are at some, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We utilize all of the space we have, so. Rate goes up, we. Surrender other space.
Yeah.
But they, they, but we don't do it, is it?
I don't hurt that.
You can't really break off no space what they're using, they're, I mean, it's.
I'll just go with the food pantry would want more.
Oh, yeah, food pantry.
Space to bring up our square foot. Okay.
So we're balancing.
I get it, yeah.
Yeah, food pantry may, as much of the issues of things they've got going in growth and so forth, are they, I would suggest a conversation with them to see if, if. That line was moved. Would, maybe could be done.
And with a, a lease agreement going forward, like Matt was saying, at least your board knows what to expect. You know, going down.
Yeah, right, it was.
An increase every year, it doesn't come as a shock.
It must be in writing, it's, to my understanding, there was an oral agreement that it would stick to two thousand for essentially an infinite term. But it was an oral agreement, I understand that.
We just agreed that, that the time of bought, if that's what it would be, I mean, it wasn't gonna be an infant, I mean.
Okay, but we need to, to get it in writing.
That was never discussed, we should discuss at the. Time, took it over, what? We'll start at the, you know, here's the starting point.
Just keep everybody right where they were to start on.
Well, that's the work, so, that's what we learned, yeah.
What's the monthly balance of our curiosity of.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Do you have a go on?
I guess we, at least be within a reasonable amount of what we're paying for rent, some place, that line. I mean, the county can't be paying nine seventy-five and just. Leasing space we could use for our own, you know, for cheaper, I mean, a lot cheaper amount, I guess, that's my opinion.
Nine seventy-eight was calculated off of.
That's why, that's why, they, they're referencing that as what we're paying at Smithville, they serve public health, or two.
Where you had a, you've been called someone to give you, when we were first talking with the aging, the aging group. About the current market rates, on office space, Mark, you recall what that number was?
Aye.
It was somewhere that made.
Same, same range.
They were at the gross from twelve to fifteen bucks a square foot.
Full, full service up.
The full service.
Lease space.
Lease space out there, that's what they are.
Where they are now?
No, they're just saying the market.
The market, you and the.
They did a market.
Yeah, last year.
That's what last year, yeah, that's what the core mark. Do you suggest that we come back as a board with a? For, yeah, what can you, yeah, I mean. You know, something out of, we'll have some, yeah.
Uh-huh.
Like, Rat Juski was the ten, twenty percent.
Yeah. Yep, that's.
And if it was, if we structured the lease such that, you know, whatever it is, it's a hundred bucks a month this year, and then next year, it's. Better, it, or whatever, per month, and increased, it, it's structured out for several years, and it's, everybody knows what's planned.
I was gonna say. For several years.
Center for everybody, it's just so much for you.
Yeah.
Rather than being chunked up, right?
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Cause budgets are set.
Yeah.
Even ours is set for next year, so.
I think it counted for it.
Just like our budget gets very, gets very, uh, microscopically examined by the state, wanting to make sure. Examined by the state wanting to make sure we don't increase property taxes, we have.
But we also got to look at, I mean, down the road, we're eventually gonna have upkeep in the building, so we gotta save up for a rainy day too, we can't. Leasing out to break even, I mean, we, you know, we're, if a, air conditioning unit goes out, you're seven, eight thousand dollars, well. You know, that comes out of our pocket, and there's forums sitting there as if maybe, yeah.
Right.
Not only, I mean, we paid one point two for the building, and we. We are getting zero, zero back, I think it's funny, what we, you know. That's, not, we're not here to make money, but on these cover expenses, save up for doing.
US taxpayers require that we.
We talked to the board, and I will as well.
Yeah, this is, this is helpful, yeah.
Like last month, just the electricity and, uh, maybe. Painting was forty-three hundred some dollars, that's just for your guys', the other three empty shares without the.
And here we get, you're bringing in.
We're bringing in forty-five hundred, well, forty-six.
Forty-three, and that was just, that was just Chuck and electricity, that was nothing else.
Yeah, what was the electricity bill alone?
Forty-one hundred.
Forty-one hundred.
So like, the, the food pantry started at two thousand, but they had a set fifty dollars each year that would just increase. Two thousand once. So they're at, yeah, so they're up to twenty-one hundred now as of July first, so they built that in.
Okay.
As an example, I'm not saying that fifty dollars is the magic number, but I mean, that's.
When they are, they started out at ten, ten dollars.
We don't have any, do we have some solar panels? That's something that. We're looking into.
And that's, that's our biggest cost.
Yeah.
It's heat and weather.
Yeah.
Air conditioning, refrigerators. We at least gotta break even, cause we're paying. I mean, if one empty was in there, we could do the possible move public help, and we're gonna save thirty thousand here, there. That, that's what I'm getting, we're paying thirty thousand dollars a year rent, and I'm with me, just.
All right. Uh, we got anything coming up?
That's, would you like us to get on the agenda, wanna give us two weeks to go through the board?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, yeah.
So ten to.
I don't think this is anything. We're just wanna get.
Yeah.
It'd be just nice to have both sides just get it, agree, here, here's what it is, and here's what'll go with the, yeah.
All right.
That works for me.
Thank you.
You bet, you bet.
Yeah, you bet, have a good rest of the day.
Yep.
Alright, so see you, we'll see you at the sandbag.
I'll run the show while you can hold him up.
All right, couple of miscellaneous items next, uh, possibly discuss an act on options for setting up a hearing on sale. The old DHS building.
I just left this on here, I'd be, said basically, we'll just leave it on each week, if you get a. Maybe you wanna wait till, till you talk to Andy, what the exact procedure should be, but when you get a offer, then you'll be ready to act on it.
Yeah. I think it's good to hear, cause it's positive, yeah, nine hundred some deals is pretty good deal. But. About the local mutual entities. Yeah. Reencouraging. This hasn't been up that long.
All right, we'll move on then, we have to set some public hearings for zoning issues.
You know, I've got three of them, one is a rezoning for Ed Galing and David and Julie Hemstop. Uh, Matt, we're tentatively putting on, uh, September second, so since the day, the Tuesday after Labor Day at ten. And at ten thirty is, uh, amendments to the actual zoning ordinance, I think these have to do with the. Accessory dwelling units.
Still law changes.
Yeah, and so that one, actually, we only put on, only said we only need like fifteen minutes, because it'll be. Should be pretty straightforward, and then we have, uh, all ring. Uh, rezoning request, and that one, that, actually, we only put that a last one on ten minutes, and then the next one, we put out ten forty. On the same day for all ring, and that one, I'm planning to leave at least an hour, because there's.
He said be the last thing on the agenda.
P and Z ordinance, one is ten thirty.
Yeah. So ten, ten thirty, and ten forty. On that same day. And they're all resolutions, but I think you can take one action to set all those public hearings.
What's the daily hemset one, is it?
It's just a family farm, they're selling.
We need a half hour for that?
With what? Recommendation once. So I, I don't know the details of what's going on, or controversy or anything, I just know that that's what he recommended.
The accessory dwelling one, it sounds like the state pretty much. It's set all of that, so we didn't have to investigate much.
So the Galing one, is that what time?
And then thirty, I heard you that, accessory dwelling, then ten forty.
So a half an hour for the Galing one. Yeah. I'd move to. Parkman setting the public hearings for the Galing, P and Z, and all ring.
I'll second that. The motion is second to set the public hearings on the P and C, for the P and Z. Um, for September second at ten o'clock, ten thirty, and ten forty.
It's a resolution. I. I speak on.
Mark, are you, Mark Baldwin?
Yes.
Confusing. You are going down, and are, are you on the HR track, did you go ahead and?
I did sign up for the HR track, I'm just gonna say it's.
There is a, this particular, uh, ISAC meeting has a half-day educational track on HR, HR record keeping. Et cetera, for the four hours of.
Wednesday, Wednesday, I think it's Wednesday.
I see, I think it is, and it's, uh, that's well worth. Many of the issues, looking at what they have to say, or some of the issues that we've discussed here, even in for six companies.
That's the one I'm signed up for as well, and then I'm also planning to go to the joint one, three auditors, and. Board supervisors, um, property tax issue.
See what comes out of it, I'm, I may try, I think, I wonder. Lynch and Dallas, they're usually an exhibitor, stop by and. Is it for them for which is our HR consultants? Would be, like we had a, I, I mentioned this been, like, we had a. The IT department came up from ISAC and did a investigation, and gave us a report card of how well we were doing with. In respect to our IT issues, remember how well we, remember how well we did in certain areas. I'm just trying to be positive, because we made good improvements. The other would be to see if there's something available, where someone came up, and from the perspective of HR, looked at us in record keeping and things of that nature, so that we don't. Find ourselves in a, in a position sometime in the future where we're not keeping proper records and so forth, so maybe there's an audit option or something we could find. That would help us identify and prove.
Is Lynn going down to?
She, she's not, she has family commitments, she went, she looked into it.
I don't, some of those sessions are recorded, I don't know.
Yeah, that's something.
Because the big topic this time is HR.
It's a big topic, and it's, it's better be proactive in the beginning, if, you know, certain things that we may not know about, we gotta see if we can. Give us an opportunity to improve.
All right, next item on the agenda, Andy Vandermont, I see you're online there, Andy. Can't hear you.
Get those three little dots next to his name, do they? Is he muted? No.
Well.
Oh, he's muted.
Should be fine.
Um, go down to the lower right, where there's a speaker, there an X next to that speaker?
Yes.
Now you gotta click on that, at that, the, the. Speaker, I think we're on, the whole computer's muted. How are you doing now, you might, now, yeah, there's a, Andy.
Okay, Fatima's got it now, so hopefully she can get us up and going.
So Andy.
We can hear Fatima, so it must be Andy.
Yes. Yeah, it's from his side. So maybe he wants to rejoin, or maybe he wants to check his, uh, sound settings.
We could hear Fatima, so our end is working, but we can't hear you, Andy. And she said maybe you could sign off and rejoin, or check your sound settings or something?
Or, or call in.
Still can't hear you. He signed off, maybe if he signed back in.
Is this any better? Morning, Andy. I guess, uh, one question. Uh, came up when we were talking to Stephanie, is, uh, can the county counter offer, and how do we go about it if we want to?
Probably lots in the beginning.
These sandbags.
You want higher drill?
Yeah.
You left the meeting.
I've seen water, just sit, just sit in the. There's more enough rock to get a little practice, just, cause I drained my pool one time, I've never had a puddle of water anywhere, just talking, breaking out.
I had all that heavy rain this morning in Spillville for almost hours, and I, I saw the come up, and then.
Yeah, sandy.
But it was.
At the same way down the. When the river got past, then see a drive coming up.
But we had so many inches, we laughed when I left, before the rain was slower to go down.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, it's getting, getting built up. The ground's so hard to.
On that letter you had to, on that floor, or that, they were asking if we would provide some. Information about our county back to them.
Well, I just gave it to Sherwood, so like.
I'll take, I'll, 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 if you give me the, I'll have, I'll call the one's waiting for him.
I guess, Andy, one of the questions we had, and Stephanie was here, on that DHS building. Uh, can the county counter offer, and what's the procedure to do so? Um, yeah, you can, and I thought about that the other day, I'm just. I'm not sure whether you wanna do that before or after your public hearing, or if you wanna have a public hearing and authorize. A counter at X number of dollars, and if that counter is accepted, the offer is accepted, um. Your other alternative, make the counter ahead of time, but you can't bind yourselves to that until you have the public hearing anyway. So it seems to me that. You have the public hearing, and say, okay, if this went from X to. X plus fifty, or whatever your number is. Um, we'd accept it and approve that at the hearing.
Could all bidders provide a counter, or is it just the highest bid?
Two, two.
I haven't seen the other one, um, you could. And then you'd have a public hearing on both, uh, both bids, and say, this is what's out there, and here's the number that we will accept.
How do you?
Or could they even make that possible?
I mean, how, how do you, if you say, well, we would accept whatever the number is? What if they both say, oh, yeah, we're willing to pay that, then how do you decide between?
Probably say that this is, we would accept no less than this, and both are, uh, can submit their proposal at. This deadline, and if you.
You submit another bid, anything other than what is dollars.
And that would, and you'd approve that number, or no less than that number in your public hearing, and. You'd have that out of the way anyway.
We have to go in, close session, we discussed the number we wanna come up with.
Um, I would advise that, or it might make it pretty easy for a buyer to.
List a closed session for next week, and maybe Andy can start. Uh, drafting out of the way the wording would be for the public hearing, once we know the number.
Just act only on these two, should we wait and see if there's more bids out?
I mean, you could act on any business, right, Steve, by. Whatever the date is, like the Friday before the public hearing, or the time of the public hearing, or something like that.
Yeah, sure. Act on any and all bids.
Received up.
Public hearing. Left to the public hearing.
At the public hearings, set at ten o'clock and someone walks through the door.
I would, I would give them Friday at four.
Four.
Yeah. At least you've got.
Yeah.
A chance to look at it.
It's a lot like what we did in Freeport, that we rejected the first bid, you know, and went and put it.
Yeah.
We all. Put a mark on it and then it came in over the top.
I'll plan to put the closed session on next week so you can discuss what that number might be.
Yep.
And we'll go from there then as far as paperwork and setting the public hearing and so on. I think we might be able to even come out of the closed session and take action then to set the public hearing at that time if we're.
You've been pretty optimistic about time between now and then, but.
Is there, is something happening upstairs?
Uh, they're, they're doing some painting, uh, they're moving some furniture around, you know, there's stuff going on.
That's right.
Maybe there'll be something else there Monday. Um, one of the things I was. Oh, I was muted, which, you know, a lot of people appreciate. I was gonna, uh, Steve had brought up the H R issue. I think that was one of the things that you and Shirley and I talked about when. We were discussing H R in general and we're talking about some projects that should be done. One of those is, I think, an H R evaluation. I, I mean, I think, uh, you know, we could talk to. We could talk to Holly, see if their firm would do it or if they have somebody that, uh, you know, contracts and that type of thing. But if you're interested in that, maybe wait until after you have your. Your H R class, but it, I, I mean, I think that was one of the, the bigger projects on our list.
On our list.
To follow up on it. I think it would be good to get that started.
Some. Yeah, when you step, you know, Lynch Dallas will be there at the ISAC meeting, may ask Lynch Dallas if they have that service available or like maybe Holly that.
Yeah, he was cool. He was the other one that did that.
Or that was Cooney and ours.
Almost, but I think, um, I mean, you guys have. You've kind of, you've kind of retained Lynch Dallas or you've got them on. Uh, on the chain or I think, uh, I, you know, can I see what your thoughts are after you do that class, but I, I would think they would. Either be able to do it or could provide us with a contract that could. Cause I, I mean, I have. I have some concerns just given the way things are handled differently with different departments, different offices. Not every, not everything rolls through Ben's office and I think, um, we wanna make sure that at least some of the collateral stuff is being. Handled correctly.
Policy that's good for all.
Yeah, and since Ben is the central record keeper, as the, as the county representative, it would be good that we know that we have. All of the, you know, access. For Godwin.
Um, sent, uh, sent me an email over the weekend with, uh. Public records, uh, policy, you know, next with ten days, if you could respond one way or the other on it, suggestions, comments. Move or whatever, we'll get it to, to them and try and get this thing wrapped up.
Okay, is, uh, you know, I, one of the quick concern I had, or question I had out of that was. It would seem that verbal requests and things like that would leave, leave just open questions. Is it? Is it possible to have it as a policy that we?
We have in there that it's our, our desire that it be submitted in writing. We can't require that under state law. But we can go back and say, look, I'm not sure I'm clear on what you're asking for. Or, and I think I put this in, if I haven't, we can, we could say that, um, any. Any verbal request will receive a written confirmation. So we get a request for X, Y, Z documents. Our response is, hey, we're going to provide you X, Y, Z. And if there's something that's in that email response that. You know, this request you think is incomplete or inaccurate, it's on us, it's on them at that point. Or, you know, here's what we believe you're asking for. Oh, please confirm.
I don't think that is actually. May not be entered. That's a, that's a real, that would be a good addition.
Yeah, I, I'll double check. I, I looked at it. Um, maybe I don't stick it, but I will.
But I think that would be, it would avoid errors and that would be a good, a good policy if we could incorporate that.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's just another way of confirming exactly what they're asking for.
Keeping the dialogue going. Yeah.
You don't have anything else for Andy?
Thank you.
I'm, you might wanna leave me off next Monday's and the following Tuesday agenda. I'd rather be here, just to be clear, but. Thank you.
Yeah, there, and then as soon as, this is an F Y I, uh, as soon as. You're through that cycle and the state is, this, we, we need the state to tell us when they will come to deal with the electronics that are planted courtroom. And, and secure that so that we can then proceed with the electrical and painting and carpeting. As soon as that date is established, that John has already, like, already briefed all of the other vendors. That that's the date when everybody will be, will be there to get that completed, put back together so that they stake and reestablish electronics.
But I think that initially it's one of our chambers, the one note, we don't have trial priorities, so. That. That is going to channel to be our best.
That's a long ways away. And you actually have more than that in the courtroom. New.
I think we have, we have trial probably September, week of September seventeen, twenty fourth. Um, it.
Yeah.
It's October, maybe here before July. All right, thank you guys.
Yeah, see you.
Thank you.
Just update on the trees, um, John and I, Stephenson and. Revises kind of the thing and putting recommending trees on the ballpark, uh, we suggested out. Here.
Mm hmm.
Different places. So I think John is gonna submit that grant application, whether we, we can get it, but you never know, you know?
Yeah.
It's a nice thing. It's, it's no cost to us other than I think we need to invest in maybe some tree guards or something.
We may need to, we lost part of the center of that one big tree down there by the flagpole. And when they looked at it, they're saying it's pretty.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, so Drew recommended.
Yeah.
So we're removing that now before more disease gets attracted to the other trees. And also. He would like to see us take out the two ash trees that aren't being treated over here because they're harboring.
Insect.
You know, so it's just a matter of time because one, actually the far one is showing signs of. Going and so I think.
Yeah.
Have my recommendation, if we're gonna have a tree guy in here moving trees, do all three of them at the same time.
Yeah, so I think something, something is in progress. Uh, right now, John's hands are kind of wet.
So I told Drew to reach out to John since he works with him on, figure out what they are.
Yeah, and this, what Andy was referring to is we do, we've gotten the carpet, carpeting is going in and the repainting of that from where the, where the, uh. Where that barrier is at the front courtroom that separates the, the council and so forth from their back, that's being carpeted. And, uh, the painting and so forth and new lighting in there is being taken care of. But we have to wait on this other because of all of the electronics that the state put in. As far as the videos and recording and everything else that happens. So that, with that schedule, that'll happen. In the meantime, there'll also be. Probably when it's dark time, all the carpet is in for the judge's library and that part of the courthouse, to get that part of it, which hasn't been touched in a long time. And a repainting of that will be completed for Judge Perry, Chambers and so forth. So that's all in progress.
Sell that carpet on eBay is collectible.
You're a piece of.
Uh, what's your deal, Jerry?
Second.
What's your, the second through dirt, it's possible to pay for sale.
All right.
Those carriers. Let's take it now.
She.
Water over there.
Sweet.
What? So. Now I'm living with it.
The. Is that, is that the one? That is also. I just made the.
Yes.
Mm hmm. You need.
Those two. Yeah, they were rejected by the P and D, so both of those two. And there's, we're C S R. Yeah, there's a C S R. Eighty, eighty on those grounds and there is an issue on the ones. They're not.
Is.
It's where the borrowed is much fifty two. Think you'd have a C S R of eighty after you pull twenty feet of ground out of there?
Oh, that one was good. Black, black.
Oh, yeah. But why didn't you feel eighty at the last?
I can't, I can't, I can't. That should be as good as, that's as deep a black ground.
Even where, even where the log break is.
Yeah. Oh, I know that. Something near that. It's, that's, it's no place to be doing like. What, they're just waters right there. Uh, it's, it's, what is that? That C S R is still off.
Yeah. How do you get virgin soil like twenty feet deep still?
Should be a little easier.
When you list, when do they go through the standard?
Yes.
Yeah, see, we actually were coming through Des Moines area. Yeah, the city, but.
You know.
It hardly been getting everybody in there. Yeah, yeah, and we were already gone for eight days.
Okay, you can shut it down, Fatima. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.